Chair, members of the board, we have our first finalist, Carrie Smith. She's going to spend the next 45 minutes. She's going to explain 17 hard-hitting questions. Chair, I know that you want to do a brief introduction. So maybe just as you go around, you know each other as you go around the table. Can we just talk how it is that you're on this, serving this great county?
Good afternoon, Carrie. Hello, Carrie. I guess for myself, I've stuck around a long, many, many years serving the county. So I think 50, close to 57 years of service after this term.
Fifty-seven? Holy, that's pretty impressive. That is very impressive.
I started when I was in, right out of grade school.
That means you're 60.
So. No, I've just liked serving the people of Becker County all those years. I'd like to continue, but there's a time when you probably should just say enough is enough.
All right, we're going clockwise.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So Carrie, obviously, you know, I've been here for just about a year and a half serving the Becker County. I really enjoy it. I am glad that I decided to file and run, and I'm glad I got elected. Yeah, and I want to continue.
Hi, Carrie. Erica Jobson. I think really, as you know, I've been here about a year and a half, and it has been a challenge, but it has been very rewarding. I think the biggest challenge for me is just learning everything because there's, and you know, a lot of things to, that comes with being a commissioner. But that's also the most exciting thing is, for me, learning everything. So, thank you.
Hi, Carrie. I think we, I think we touched on this, or I touched on this upstairs, and what I said was, you know, I love this job. And now, there's been difficult times, but when you get people thanking you and showing appreciation, I think that's the key to making you a better person, a better commissioner in my case, and gives you the drive to continue. And I think we have the common, a common goal of trying to maneuver some of the state rules and some of the things before us that need, need some, a lot of work.
All right.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you can say, "I love this job," but I do, I do think it's an important job, and I do think that people should serve. I think it's important that, and that you get different views and, as much as I would just rather be in a fishing boat or something today, at the same time, if you want your county to be what you want it to be, I think you should be involved in it, and that's why I'm here.
All right.
Okay. Carrie, we'll start out with question number one.
All right.
We've had an opportunity to review your application, background information. Is there anything else you think we should know about your education, work experience, that makes you the best person for this position?
Well, I only know a snippet of the other candidates, so I can only speak about myself. My whole entire career, I worked in public service, with the exception of when I was a waitress when I was going to college, which was an experience in itself, but it paid the bills at the time. But my career, I actually started in public sector while I was going to college, in the Sheriff's Department, work nights, went to school during the day, and until I completed my undergrad, and then continued on through the public sector, through law enforcement, human services, social work, and then eventually then moved on to supervising other staff in Cass County and Fargo. And then alongside of that, I always was very involved with my community, which I think my resume probably talks about, or you would read that, because I also feel that it's very important. I always called it my, you know, I worked in the public sector, you know, that's what I did for my career, but then also on the side, I volunteered much of my time to many causes that I felt were important within my community. And then I also served eight years as an elected official, was on many boards through school, through church, was a Girl Scout leader, all kinds of things that reflect that on my, so I think for me, I have a very strong understanding of being involved in the community and also working in the public sector. So, that's a summary.
I didn't, oh, you were a city council member.
Yes, Glendon, Felton.
I can't remember. Glendon, yes. For eight years.
Glendon Felton is two towns.
I know that. Thank you very much.
They each have their own city council.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Felton.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. So, next question is, describe how you would build an open and trusting relationship with department heads, staff, and the board.
I think that starts with the, with the key word that you said. I think it's, it's trust, and I think it's mutual respect. And I believe that you, you give respect to receive respect. I think it's everybody's responsibility, and you start that process early on, and you really learn about the individuals, and you listen to the individuals. And then from there, it grows individually into, into a team, and I think that really is about relationships with department heads and employees, and also with the board. You know, each board member has different ideas and objectives, and I'm a very strong believer that I don't think any idea is a dumb idea. It might be different, but I always like to look at things from different perspectives, you know. A quick story, when I used to work in the Sheriff's Department, we played this game. It's called "What If: What Would You Do?" So we came up with all these random scenarios, and you had to listen to, it was really just a debate, kind of to keep us awake, when you're working in the jail. But again, that goes way back in my history. I just, and then being a social worker, you work with all walks of life, all different types of people, different cultures, different backgrounds, and I always enjoyed learning about people, just in general, and just how they thought about the world, and what they thought about just anything and everything. So, again, to summarize that, I just think you take the time to get to know the people, and I always believed that in a work environment, you, you don't have to be friends with all of, with all of the employees, but you have to be friendly, and you have to be civil, and you have to be respectful.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carrie. Describe your management or leadership style. Be sure to include specific examples on how you would engage leadership, including commissioners, in your decision-making process.
I think it depends on the situation. So my leadership style is pretty collaborative, I would say, just in general. I always am thinking about things or looking at big picture, probably is probably the best description. So as far as engaging others, I always like to hear what other people's feedback is. I always like to know ideas from other people, and then if I have ideas. But then I think, as you, as you look at that, I think always coming back to the table and reviewing what decisions you maybe have made, to see if you need to look at something differently. Can you read the question again? I think I'm getting off task here.
That's okay. Describe your management or leadership style, and be sure to include specific examples on how you will engage leadership, including commissioners, in your decision-making process.
Okay. So, and again, I already said this, but my management style, I think, is really collaboratively, but I'm also not afraid to make hard decisions. They have to be made, and I think I've done that several times here already. And again, having those hard conversations, that's really my management style. I think being upfront with people, I think that's what people want. They may be, I truly believe that if you manage people in management style, that nothing on an evaluation, I've said this numerous times, should ever be a surprise. You should be having those conversations with those that you supervise. You should be giving feedback. Employees want that feedback. And then I think I always want that feedback, and I think with commissioners too. There was something, if I were given this position and something you wanted me to do or do better or do differently, I would expect that you would give me that, that feedback. So again, I think that flows all the way through, in style for me. You know, a specific example I can think of, you know, I think about hard decisions that I've had to make in my career numerous times. When you have to terminate people, it's a terrible decision you have to make, but the decision has to be made. But I also think that during the course of my career, I think anybody that, that has, that decision's ever been made, I've always gotten feedback that, "Thank you for, you know, not, you know, giving me the respect I deserve, and thank you for the feedback," which I think speaks to having a hard conversation. So.
You mentioned that some, some hard decisions that you've made, you kind of referenced that, that you've made since in the interim, or can you give an example of one of those decisions, like, and how you would, you mentioned you had hard, you've shown hard, you've made these hard decisions now in this role you've had, but what, can you give an specific example of one of those and how you engage leadership with that hard decision?
Well, I'll use the termination piece, and then I can use another example. There have been some of those situations here at the county, and engaging leadership. I've done that with, whether it be the board chair, or if it's been employee, you know, speaking and getting feedback also from a supervisor or department head. And really, when I, when we're looking at having, when I'm looking at having to make those decisions, I always want to be able to walk away knowing that we've given the employee every opportunity to rectify the situation, and I don't think those decisions should be made lightly. So I've made several of those decisions while in this, this county, and, and just to be frank, a hard decision for me was when I agreed to take the interim position. That was really hard, because that just wasn't in my plan, but no, some stability needs to happen here, and I agreed to that, and then it evolved, and the job grew on me. So, that's the truth.
I guess just comment on that. I had to kind of twist the arm for a bit to get her to really look at it, and I want to thank her for stepping up that role.
Okay. Anything else on through number three? Otherwise, I'm at number four. Please describe your involvement and process in developing the annual budget of your organization, and as well as your experience with long-term financial and capital planning.
This goes back to my work, you know, in the, in the city. Way back, we got, I got very involved with the, with the budget planning in the, in my city where I served, and they just didn't have a good mechanism for capital expenditures. They were financing many things. So really, my planning on that part was really to go, we went through that budget, line item by line item, and really looked at where cost savings could be. I asked a lot of hard questions of our city clerk at that time, and really set them on a forward path, I would say, really just to look at how they were purchasing things and, and really to start the planning, the planning process, and how you plan forward for expenditures, you know, squad cars, all those types of things that you know you have to, and getting them on a replacement schedule. You know, now, and I've started the process in this county because, again, I think earlier than later. So we have put together, or Mary has put together a schedule of timelines for the budgeting process, and, and hoping that that will start sooner than later. So really, again, having those departments look at their budgets, where they're over, where they're under, how things can be adjusted, what are your needs going forward, and then I also think this county should look at the priority of a capital improvement budgeting going forward as well. And I took a full year, of course, of public budgeting in grad school as well. So, tried to put all that to use, yes.
Any other questions?
No.
Why do you see being responsible for, or who do you see being responsible for setting the agenda? What is the role of the commissioner and the county administrator in this process?
When you say agenda, you're talking board, board agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I see the responsibility as a draft, as the county administrator, because they are on the forefront of knowing what needs to come before the board, and what kind of timelines we're on, and also trying to keep the board informed. Now, when I say draft, I think there's always room for additions, deletions, and so I think it's a joint effort. I also think that there's other board members, and this has happened while I've been in this role, that have reached out and say, you know, "I have this person or that person that would like to come to speak." And I think we have a pretty good internal system now that we are holding, you know, for the next board if we can't get them on. But also, you know, setting that agenda, I have worked to try to look to see where the efficiencies come, come in, what can we put on the consent agenda? So I think that's partly has been my responsibility, but then also listening to some, some of the communication from the board as well. Do they want more discussion on certain items? Is this working and getting feedback? So I think it's a joint effort.
Other questions? Comments?
I just want to point out these, we just assigned these questions, no specific order whatsoever, so these were questions that came from, and we didn't, we just said, "Let's go in order and ask them," so we're not, there's no.
You haven't lost your order yet.
No, we, we've marked them, so we're just trying to keep track.
I practiced mine.
I have a complaint. I have the longest question. My question is the longest.
Yeah.
I think you're a good reader.
I think you're a teacher.
Okay, Carrie, please tell us about a time you had to make a decision that was unpopular.
I'm sure I've made many. This, this goes back to my, when I was on, serving on the council. Small town, small-town politics, I'm sure you can all kind of relate to those issues. I was in charge of the police and fire rescue squads. That was kind of my portfolio while I was there, and a tough decision that I had to make, and got a lot of pressure and a lot of pushback. We had a, we were interviewing for a patrol spot, and we went through the process. I was one of the other, one of two of the, that was on the hiring committee, as well as our clerk at that time. And the scoring reflected that the other board member's relative was not the high scorer, and I was absent when they took the vote, so it was a split, it was a split vote, but I was a part of the interview team. So, the hard decision and unpopular, there's a lot of, how do I say this politically correct? Small town, I'll just keep the small-town politics. And I made the decision that the more qualified candidate was not the relative of the, of the board member, and I got a lot of media attention for that, and a lot of pushback from the board that they, this person had, was a longstanding resident of our town, and it was the right thing, it was, should have been the other, the candidate that was related, and those types of things. So, a lot of the town thought that because of who the person was, they should have been given the job. And I was the tiebreaker.
Carrie? Other question? Comments?
Dave. All right, here goes my narration, Carrie.
Okay.
Okay, Becker County has a culture of providing excellent customer service. What does providing excellent customer service mean to you? And what would you do as a, as the county administrator to ensure customer service-driven organization? To ensure a customer service-driven organization, sorry. Do you want me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you want me to repeat the whole thing, or just the?
Yeah, if you could repeat.
Okay. So Becker County has a culture of providing excellent customer service. What does providing excellent customer service mean to you? And what would you do as the county administrator to ensure a customer service-driven organization?
Got it. Okay. Well, I'm going to start with the new employee orientation, because this is a slide that we present, or we started presenting to our new employees. And my definition of customer service, and I make a point to tell all new employees this, is that it doesn't, it starts with the public, but it doesn't end with the public. You need to provide good customer service all the way through, to the public, answering questions, but also I term public service, or excuse me, good public service to all. And then I also expand on that, that it's also within your department. It's also with other departments. It's also with your supervisor and all the way through. So, it starts for me with educating employees, what's the expectation? And again, that's started with our employee orientation, and make a point to point out expectations for employees. So how I would promote that, again, I'm a strong believer that good public service, that it's everybody's job to answer questions, and of the public, and if you don't know the answers, you assist the public individual with the questions to get to the right person without transferring them on the phone, for instance. Talked about that in departments where we want to take a look at how things are happening between departments, so that our public, when they come in to try to get something answered, they're not being pushed around from department to department. But I also think, as a leader, that you also demonstrate and take the time to speak to the public, whether that's the media, asking questions, or it's a, I had a gentleman that came in, and the issue really had nothing to do with any of our, my department, but it really had nothing to do with even Becker County, but he just wanted to have a chat and try to figure out, so I took the time to listen to him, and then followed up and gave him some information where I thought he was, what he was looking for. So, that's how I would term public service.
Okay. What do you think is the biggest challenge facing counties today?
Counties, as you say?
Counties, yep.
Counties S. Oh, boy. I think in general, the way the legislature is running currently, we never know what's going to be before them, or what's going to go, or what's not going to go, and then how it's going to impact counties. I think at times we're left on alert. I would say, for me, that if you were talking broadly for all counties, I would say that's probably the biggest challenge, but I think the solution to that is, this county and many other counties, I think we have, we have to do our due diligence to know the information, to get the information, probably to become more involved, have our own legislative platform, whatever that looks like, or joining with other counties. And I think, you know, some of the tone has already been set for that when we talk about, you know, the white earth, forest transfer, and tax-forfeited lands, and those types of things. And I just got a quick email about legislative and people trying to interpret what really happened this last session. So, yeah, I see that as a challenge, and just the communication or the, how the communication comes to the counties. But I think we also have a responsibility, if we're not getting the communication that we're expecting in order to function the way we should function, that we should be going and seeking the information.
I don't, any, any follow-up on legislative? Yeah, we all know what the legislative can do, can do to our day-to-day operations, so.
Yes.
Question number nine. One of our goals is to build on our efforts to support a community and workplace that is welcome, welcoming and inclusive. How will you contribute to this goal? One of our goals is to build efforts to support a community and workplace that is welcoming and inclusive.
Well, I, I think you could, or I could, I think there's many things that can be done. I think it's, again, open door communication. I think I have a strong belief that everything starts with communication. So, you know, making people, you know, it's one thing to hire people, but making sure that they are assimilated into the culture and understand the culture, and I think there's many things. I think there's, you know, orientation, what questions to answer for new employees. And for community, you know, being involved in, in different committees and getting to know our partners and, and working with them. But, again, inclusion, I think you have a county-wide expectation, but then you have within departments, operations that look differently by jobs and such. But again, I think it's a, I would say it's a work in progress. I think there's work to be done. I think culture here is a, is a longstanding, it's a longstanding culture, and, you know, some of it is historical, some of them, some of it makes lots of sense. Some of it probably we want to take a look at, and what do we want to do better? What do we want to do different? Asking questions. I always like to ask the historical questions, and I just was doing that at the beginning, or yesterday, you know? Where did this come from? What is the history? Because I, you know, if you're going to look at trying to move things forward, I think you got to know the history behind it and the why.
Okay. I'll try this again.
All right.
Describe your experience working collaboratively with the other units of governments or organizations. Describe how building these types of relationships benefit, benefited the community or organization you worked for.
I think that's been my history, probably all the way through, but, you know, probably the longest-standing history, you know, working collaboratively with other cross-units, I would say, probably can speak loudly enough to, when I worked in human services in Fargo, there was a lot of cross-workings, if you will, and generally speaking, you had working relationships with attorneys, you had working relationships with law enforcement, the CAC, where they do forensic exams, trainers, state individuals that are making policy. So it, it's through and through. So, you know, what's good about that for me? What I learned, I always learned a lot about what the other people were doing, and I think you have, helps you to get to a mutual understanding of how others' roles overlap with what you're trying to accomplish, and I think it just helps, just in general, working relationships, and you're more comfortable asking questions about scenarios or situations. So I just think that that's a must, and I was also involved in many MDTs or, you know, cross-cultural disciplines where we looked at casework and different things, and it wasn't about to point out what went wrong, it was more about what can we do better? It was always, you know, the goal was always to improve, so.
Question 11. Tell us about an experience where you evaluated a program, service, or policy to determine whether it was producing a desired result. whether it was producing a desired result.
Gosh. Well, um, I don't know if this is fits in there, but, you know, when I came into this county, there was, uh, in the human resource, uh, position, I was a little bit, uh, surprised, I'll say surprised, um, with the hiring process of how, um, things were like just sitting out there with no follow-up, no, um, interviews being scheduled, no explaining to people that positions had been filled, no closing of positions, there was just, it was just all sitting out there. So, um, we really, um, when I came in, we really took a look at the process and I felt very strongly that, um, perhaps we're not getting good qualified candidates because we're not giving them feedback, we're not, um, honing in on good quality candidates. They're moving on, they're going other places, we're losing out on our opportunity to hire some of those candidates. So, we implemented, um, you know, how that was going to look as far as once we're posting positions and the expectation of, uh, we're closing them out once we schedule the interviews and it's a must that we're, um, notifying candidates that have applied. And really with the end goal in the evaluation of that process was really to get our ongoing openings down and also, um, to maintain staff and lessen the turnover. And I think, I don't have the stats for, for you, but, um, uh, I think we have certainly, um, accomplished that. We have very few positions that are open. But also looking at, you know, some of those hard-to-fill positions, okay, what we're doing isn't working, so let's take a look at what we can do better, different, um, with the attorneys or, well, the attorneys is probably a good example. And bring in, uh, a firm that can have, uh, far-reaching tentacles, if you will, into other organizations and try to think outside the box in order to fill those positions. So I think it's just really, um, I'm not a believer, I, I'm a strong believer that if you don't keep repeating doing stuff, because that's the way you've always done it, if it's not working, then you look for something different. And you keep trying until you figure it out.
Did you change any notifications, you know, of, of employments that, that didn't make the cut, or did you change any of those policies that you saw or, did you modify anything?
As far as in the actual policy, so it's asking.
Of, you said that the people weren't being notified of, if they weren't, weren't, weren't being considered or, or what's going on and did you, did you?
Yes, once, once, uh, we have a candidate that's accepted the position and we've done a, whether it be a contingent offer or an offer, we are notifying all other applicants. And I say that when I'm in the interviews, that you will be notified whether our final decision is, whether you're selected or whether or not you are not.
Anybody else have anything? All right, next question. Carrie, describe your experience working actively on legislative issues affecting or impacting the community you have worked for.
Um, well, when I worked on the North Dakota side, um, I was very active working in the legislature. Um, I actually was on, uh, it was part of a, well, they don't have active unions over there, so, um, we'll call them employee organizations. Was very active on the board and really their platform over there was legislative, um, actions. So, um, this is one, this is probably, um, it, it's a little bit complicated, but, um, when I was in human services over there, we were in similar to a merit system, you don't know what I'm talking about. Um, so they capped out wages, so lots of people got capped out and they were kind of caught between, um, two wage scales. And I, they had tried it before in the county and, uh, it had never happened, but I said, why can't we do a bill and opt out of these own systems and we'll create our own internal merit system so that people can get paid what they should get paid and not get capped, they're getting capped out like at midpoint, social workers were. And I said, well, you can try it, but it's not gonna happen. I said, well, we'll see what happens. So I, uh, did my first, uh, bill right. I went around the Capitol, got all the sponsors, and it, uh, passed through both the House and the Senate. And it allowed counties to opt out and do their own merit system, uh, for those reasons. And I actually got a word for it. It's hanging on my wall. So, yeah, I was very active. I spoke, uh, several times. I have not done it here on the Minnesota side, but I spoke, uh, several times in legislative committees on behalf of employee bills. Uh, another hot topic over in the North Dakota was when they were closing out the pension and going to, uh, like a 401 system. And, uh, so I, yeah, I was following those. But there were several, um, insurance things and, and different employee matters that I, I was actively involved in the legislature.
I guess, since you've been here, how have you been involved in the legislative process?
You know, I've, I've been here just shy of two years, so, um, I feel like I'm just now, um, probably with the white earth situation and my opportunity, when I was down in St. Paul, I made a point to go over and, and introduce myself and, um, a-again, starting those conversations. So you have some of those connections into our representatives and I would hope that, um, I would be able to continue with that. So I, I think, um, I've started to lay the groundwork, is what I would say, and I think that that can only be expanded upon.
All right. Anything else? All right. Describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards.
Did you say situation?
Describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards.
Yeah. Hmm, situation, I think of a situation. Well, I, I believe that I have high integrity and high ethical standards. I'm gonna go back to when I accepted the interim, uh, county administrator. I felt that I, um, it was a tough conversation that I came here with, but I felt, and I was not going to accept the appointment unless I was able to have you hear what I had to say. And even though some people have, you know, commented, how were you able to do that? Um, I felt very strongly that my ethical, my ethics and my integritys spoke volumes that day. And I just felt that everybody needed to get on the same page in order to move this county forward. So I think that situation probably speaks fairly loudly.
Okay. What concerns you most about this job?
Um, I think, um, the learning curve, probably. Um, I have, I have a strong belief that we have, uh, department heads here that are very, um, very good at what they do. So I have leaned on that. Um, I don't feel that I have to be an expert in all of those areas. I have been kind of pushed in certain departments to get to know more about situations. Um, so, probably the biggest concern is, uh, yeah, um, having enough information to make good, sound decisions and, uh, just the, you know, the learning curve. Um, probably the other thing that concerns me is, and I'll just speak to, and I've already shared this with Bliza, you know, just even the very public, um, platform that all of this is in, being in a very public position. Not that I have anything to hide, but it's, I have to tell you, it's a bit unnerving. And just, just in general, just being in a very public position.
Yes, at times you don't know, well, it's a little bit different with your position cause you're, but it's at times wondering, it's, it can be very difficult. But if you, if you, in my, how I always go through, if you're doing what you believe is the best thing and being truthful with yourself and, and that's how you live with you, the decision you make, it's.
Yep.
For everyone.
I agree. If you can walk away knowing you made the best decision you could make, then you're good. Um, I did share with Bliza, I said, uh, you know, and I don't know if you guys know this, but I was hired with the FBI and all of the process I went through with them is nothing like it is. I'm telling you. What does that say? I didn't go. I, at the end of the day, I didn't go, but, uh, yes. It's not, uh, and I even did a, uh, a lie detector test and I didn't feel the same.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Interesting.
I go through one of those every night, I get home to.
Well, you must have passed more than you haven't.
He fails a lot of them. Richard.
Okay. As a follow-up to your research of our organization and community, what are you most excited about?
There's lots of things I'm excited about. Or more, more recently, I, I'm really excited, I wanna go out and see the trolls. That's just a, a small piece. Um, I, I just think, um, the sky's the limit, honestly. I mean, we have, uh, many things coming forward, you know? You have, uh, EDA that's, uh, progressing, you know, in that area. Um, you have, uh, space study and, and what the future of Becker County's gonna look like for space. Um, you have, uh, you know, the potential purchase of, uh, Toad Mountain, I think that's very exciting. Um, I just, I think there's so many things that, um, I don't even know if I could list them all. And, you know, just, uh, just the willingness, I think, of, uh, the board and, and employees just to take a look at how things are being done and, and, uh, wanting to do better. I think that's exciting.
Other comments? Next question. Why should the Becker County Board select you as the next county administrator?
Well, um, I think you should select me because, um, I've, uh, said this before, you know, um, I've taken this job for a test run and I think I've done relatively well with the situation and I think I've proven that. I'm willing to learn, I'm willing to listen, and, uh, I think the role is extremely important and I feel like I'm up for the challenge.
Comments? Last question.
Oh, good.
Aren't you glad?
Yes, I am glad. This has been a long, a wait a day.
Do you have any questions for us?
When are you gonna make a decision?
Hopefully soon, yeah.
Okay.
I know your concerns with, you're talking about it, that doing both jobs is, is hard, that's very time-consuming, a lot of stuff on the HR side going on, plus way more on the med, med side, so.
Okay.
And that, that'd be my goal, is to make a decision soon as possible.
Soon as possible.
Fair.
I think that's the rest of the board, too. Let's make a decision and move on.
Okay. My other question is, as a board, um, how would you see sharing your priorities for the county with the administrator?
I think for myself, I try to bring, knowing with you or past administrators, my concerns forward to them and so that they're known.
Okay.
I would hope the rest of the board members kinda do the same, you know? Come in and talk to you about it and, yeah, good communication, I think.
I think you can attest this to, Carrie, I reached out to you quite a bit, probably called you more than you want me to. About.
I know your phone number now when it comes up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important, um, I think communication is the biggest thing, both for the administrator and the board, and the board for the administrator. Um, so I think for me, it's, it's, um, you know, bringing concerns or priorities and also, um, you know, communicating back when, when things are happening in the county that really is important for the board to know.
That's a good question. Um, I think, I think, uh, communication will be need to, I think, as a commissioner, you have to evaluate your own wants and needs before and then, then those conversations need to be held, I think, um, to try to get that, how that relationship moves forward and how you can, um, you know, I think each commissioner may be different on how they wanna communicate and how they, how they get that, but, um, I think, I think it's important to have a, a relationship with each commissioner. To, to a point where, I think, I think a lot of it, you can glean off board meetings, too, the what direction, I think, I think that's the most important time to see what, you know, you can feel, get a feel of the board and what, where they're looking at going with different things. And if there's, and if there's a debate or, or not, if you're not on the same page, then you kinda have to, that's when you need to kinda, um, do the behind-the-scenes work and get, 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 try to get the understanding of each commissioner, how they want, how, where they're going with whatever the topic is and try to, try to, one of the most important jobs to me is bridge those commissioner relationships to make sure that they're, while they don't have to agree, that they still can, um, work together. I think that's one of the, in my opinion, one of the important jobs of an administrator is, is getting that, getting a teamwork, getting that team together. Obviously, I, I don't expect anyone ever to always agree with me. They can be wrong, you know, once in a while and then we.
One, one, yeah.
One more thing, I, to kinda answer the question you asked, um, it, it's kind of a compliment, I guess, to you. It's, it's, one thing that you've done that I have liked is, and it is what I would like to always happen, is that you recognize that we wanted to be informed more, we wanted to be transparent and how we might inform by the minister and I, and I think that you've made a good effort to, to do that, so. That's, that's a big deal to me.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, just coming to you when I have a concern, whatever it is, and I have, I just, I tell you what it is, we, we discuss it and, and so I think that's important, that, that we all do that, so that you can, get an idea of what we're all thinking. And you're certainly not gonna agree with all of us all the time. But at the same time, your job is different than mine and I expect you to do your job and, and it doesn't mean what I believe, I don't expect you to do what I believe, I expect you to do your job. And that's, that's kinda where that's at and you've been very good so far to, to talk to, so.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just for myself, in the past, administrators, you know, bring some idea forward, it'd probably do a little contact with the other board members and just see what they thought, should we bring it forward or not, you know? Has he, you got support to do, do something? It's good, so we don't put it on the agenda and if you get no support, we waste a lot of time.
Yeah, that's true.
Part of, I think, part of your job would be just to search out and see what the other board members think of our issues.
Where they like, okay.
Any other questions, so Carrie?
Carrie, have any for us? Any more for us? That's the last question.
If we're honest to ask more questions, we can all.
Oh, look at me.
Well, she gave me a big stuff I, list I can't ask you, otherwise I could keep going.
You can't see this behind you, but she's got some red flags. Whenever she.
She said she was timing me, so.
Whenever Richard was going like, then there was red.
All right, no, I don't have any other questions. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie.
Make a trip. Make a trip.
I gotta make a trip.
Yeah.
Oh, what's his name? I got to tell her. I suppose I should go to the bathroom too, so I can pay attention to.
Oh, what's his name? I got to tell her.
I was just going to tell you the good news, our assessor accepted.
Oh, good. Good, good, good.
Which one, which one was that?
Libraki.
That one from what?
From Medina. Oh, good. Good, good, good. Thanks, Carrie.
That's kind of what you wouldn't.
You wouldn't? I mean, either way, you would have been fine.
Don't push us too much here.
Yeah.
I guess you only got to do a lot cheaper.
So the, the assessor that accepted is the county assessor in Wadena. So he has, you know, experience, ready to go. He lives in Detroit Lakes.
We must pay better than Wadena.
I would think.
I would think, probably after the, we proved that scale.
That's not a nice drive in the wintertime.
No.
It's not.
Especially when you get past.
Yeah, the icy highway 10, my wife did it for years, I hated it. Actually, this is the postal service for you, though she was there 34 years. They needed help here in Detroit Lakes, she could not get transferred here.
Really?
And if you look, they're hiring, they can't get help here. They have destroyed, that nobody wants to work there.
The work environment's not bad or?
It's gotten to be really something. It's unbelievable, they got, she got a new supervisor down there and she worked with her for years and she came in and she said, I want you people to know that I'm going to put my foot down. And all the people were really hard workers down there, I got, I got to know them and my wife was so dedicated to her job and the postal service. And when that woman got done, she quit. And she, she could retire early because she was 60 and she had all those years in. But when I first met her, she planned on working until she was 70 or 75 because she loved her job. And she quit when she was 60 and all of her, it's, it's just like I say, why would you have something where you put all this time in, but you can't transfer here where they need you, you know, you. They had to hire so many part timers first here before they could hire a full timer. And they just, it's.
Well, you know, the higher the government, the less, I mean, the less flexible, the less, the slower, the more processes and it just takes forever to do anything common sense wise. It's just.
They had a guy die in a terminal cancer who was one of our friends, her friends, and became my friend, could not replace him until he died. So she, and they had an alcoholic there, could not fire her. She'd come in drinking, they'd send her home. My wife couldn't get a day off. And so if you were a really bad employee, that was the place to be.
Yeah.
If you were a good employee, it was just, it was hard, it was hard for me to understand it because that used to be a job that everybody wanted and you couldn't get.
But, yeah, now it's.
Kind of like the UPS.
Protecting the.
Same, yeah, both of them.
Protecting, so much protection, you can't get anything done.
That's what, I worked for a guy, he's been BM for 20, early in Northern, for 20 years. And he says the same thing, anybody that's, any of the bad employees, cannot get rid of them.
Well, when, when we had Jack Engst, he said, he said in California, he said, you would, you would be surprised how many teachers there are that are just, they're so bad, they just pay them and just don't come to work. It's cheaper than doing it that way than having them, trying to fire them. Poor job. We are and we're.
I just got to figure out my questions. Oh, I guess I did already start them.
Don't switch the order up.
No.
That's which order.
No.
School counter.
Oh, yeah, but I do want question 14.
I don't want to say collaborative dating again.
I don't think she has to read it, I think it's just to have on record.
I might have to interpret it for her.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board, we have Tyler Trappel here with you.
Dave Meyer, I mentioned upstairs.
Well, we thought you had special cookies, it turned out they were the same as everybody else.
Same as everybody else. Well, I shared with Tyler that he has 45 minutes, 17 questions with you and we want to start with a little bit of an introduction and why it is that you're supposed to serve this great county. And then I'll start the timer as soon as he starts responding to question number one.
Well, I guess I can start. I think discussed with you upstairs, I've had quite a few years serving people of Becker County and I've enjoyed it and I take pride in the county and hopefully we continue down a good positive road with serving the people here.
So I will next. I, I wanted to do this, I wanted to do this position, so I'm glad I applied for, to run and I've done, I've been in this position a year and a half. I lived in, in Detroit Lakes and Becker County my whole life, so it's a big deal to me to serve Becker County and try and do as much good as I can. And I want to continue to do that.
Hello, Erica Jepson, I also have been a commissioner for about a year and a half, also a lifetime Becker County resident. I think one of the best things about Becker County is we have a lot of great things happening, whether it's in our recreation, agriculture, timber sales, we have lots of good stuff happening in Becker County and one of my favorite things so far about being a commissioner is really just learning about all the different aspects. I come from a human services background, so there's a lot to learn in, in this job and that has been challenging and rewarding, so, thank you.
Barry Nelson, Commissioner down in the, in the southwest and the northwest part of the county, so the, the lakes area and then the farmland up in the northwest and part of the tribal areas, my district, so it's one of the large rural districts. I became interested in county commissioner role when I was in high school. One of my teachers in business law, Mr. Taiken, who, who lives up north of Detroit Lakes, was, discussed, the county, he said, the county commissioner has more impact on your day-to-day lives than any other politician that there is. And that's always stuck with me and, and I think it does, we, we impact people's daily lives in whether it be roads or zoning or community health. So we have a, a large role and it's kind of the unseen government, in my opinion, but I thoroughly enjoy, try to be a problem solver and negotiator and that's, that's what I enjoy about this job, trying to solve and get through some of the issues that, that are out there, so.
I love my county also and really, I don't, I don't share all the, there's, there's things I don't understand, so I'm more of a zoning and a land use person, that's. And I'm learning now, I'm learning the rest of it, that's why I got involved, is people's property rights. And so I do, I, I love our neighbors, the people of Becker County, I love our county and I want to make sure that people can use their, use their property. And, and I, like I said, there's a lot more to being a commissioner than that, but that's what, that's what I understand and bring. And I am, it is a lot to learn to be a commissioner, so, yeah, that's why I do that.
Moving on, I'll say your first question, Tyler. We've had an opportunity to review your application, background information. Is there anything else you think we should know about your education and work experience that makes you the best person for this position?
Well, excuse me, to start out with, yeah, there is a lot of things that I have and worked really hard to get my education. I was in the service, got a GI Bill Army College Fund. When I got out of the service, I was a laborer and worked in the laborers' union and also went to school to earn my bachelor's degree. Ended up working, I was working at the University of Minnesota, ended up getting a promotion after I got my bachelor's degree to a safety position and started doing training of the, you know, 3,000 facility management employees that were there, going to all different campuses. Then I ended up going to the state of Minnesota for a little over a year as an interim transfer and then while I was there, Stearns County came up with a risk managers position. So I ended up going there, working as their first risk manager and dealing with a lot of things that people don't like to deal with. It's the, the workers' compensation, the property casualty, dealing with the public on, you know, they, they had something happen to their vehicle while they're on the county road and need to put in a claim. So I've dealt with a lot of different issues. Was there for 16 years, made Stearns County, the, was the county risk management county of the year for MCIT in 2017. So it took a little bit of time, but we, we did get to a very good recognition there. Saved the money, saved the county money by doing a $100,000 per claim and $300,000 aggregate for our workers' comp side and then I made a return to work program, so we, then indemnity side would not be impacted as much before everybody had to get healed before they could come to work. So to be able to save that money, we ended up saving, you know, a million and a half dollars in, you know, 10 years on premiums because of that. Not only, but the safety side of things, we saved because we were below a one on our, we were a point six seven on our premiums. So we, we had to be 60, 69%, it was, 69% of our premium the last year I was there because of the safety things that we put in place and things that would help the county save money. So I ended up talking to my administrator and he said, you know, I said, what, what it take to be able to do your job? He says, well, Tyler, you do a lot of stuff for me and you know a lot of things. Go to school and, you know, he advocated for me to go to school and I ended up going to Hamlin and getting my master's in public administration while I was working at Stearns County. 2019, I graduated December and then, you know, what happened after that? And, you know, COVID hit and things were kind of grinding to a halt. And so I ended up starting to search for administrative position and then now that my son and daughter-in-law are expecting, we're kind of looking up this way because they live in Fertile.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tyler. Anybody else have? Okay, next question, Tyler. Describe how you would build an open and trusting relationship with the department heads, staff and the board.
Well, one is, you know, communication, you know, keeping it a two-way street. You know, anytime I have to communicate with my department heads, currently I have monthly one-to-one meetings before the council meeting is the week before. So I understand what is going on in their departments, what their budget issues are, if they're going over on some issue, because the council is going to end up asking me those questions or end up asking them, but if they don't expect it or if they're not there, I have to answer it. And so I want to make sure I understand, so we can make sure that the council understands what's going on within the city. That's the way I would treat it here, is to make sure that everybody is communicating. I end up doing a lot of different things, like if we're going to have something put on the agenda, I email all the council members saying this is going to be on the agenda so that's not a surprise, you know, you get it three days in advance and it's like, well, you know, what is this all about? At least if one has a issue or doesn't understand what, so no, they can talk to me specific, you know, but at least everybody knows it's coming and, you know, I email out making sure, hey, you know, remind you tonight is the, the council meeting, so make sure that you're, you're able to make it. And then that reminds them and if they can't make it, they can email me back, say, hey, I'm not making it because of some issue, so. I think that is where you're going to develop relationships, is making sure that you get the communication back and forth.
Do you have an example of a, of an agenda item that, that you would, that you'd email out? What, for, you know, what type of agenda item, what would draw concern for your?
Well, it was right at the last minute, I got an attorney, this last meeting, was an attorney wanted to have us put a resolution in as, there was a developer, was developing different, already rehabilitating some apartments and the city of Oakdale was going to have the bond. And so we had to make sure that we had a preliminary resolution approving that, that they can do that, because one of the properties was in the city of Bram. And instead of just having that issue come up, I made sure the, the attorney and the contractor, who was putting that bond together, come up and talk to them, you know. I said, I'm not going to put it on the agenda without somebody representing because I don't know anything about it. It was last minute, so then I sent it out and let them know exactly what was coming and the resolution, what it will look like, so. was coming, and the resolution, what it will look like. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just, yeah, just some sort of, I think there's a question later on that maybe is similar to that, so, similar to that one coming up.
Okay. Describe your management or leadership style. Be sure to include specific examples on how you would engage leadership, including the board, in your decision-making process. By board, I mean commissioners, sorry.
My leadership style is an inclusive one. I keep my department heads involved because I don't know everything. You know, if I knew everything, then they wouldn't be needed. But I have a, I think I may have been explaining, I have a street supervisor who's been with the city for 26 years, 25 years, and he knows a lot of information. And we contract with an engineer, and they ask him questions, you know, and they're designing our street water sewer projects. And he says, "No, it's not where you have it, it's over here," and stuff. So that gives them an idea, you know. So having those people who with longevity have been there for a long time, and trust them. So, and that's the same with the board, is, you know, I have to work with the board and be the liaison between the department heads and the board, and make sure that things are going with how you want them to be run. So, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
All right, any follow-up? Okay, on number four. Please describe your involvement and process in developing the annual budget for your organization, as well as your experience with long-term financial and capital planning. So the annual budget and experience with long-term financial, capital planning.
Okay, you know, the budget is, process is going on. We at the city are using spreadsheets, using Excel, so we don't have a program. So I have to take the numbers off the BAN system that we have, and put them into a spreadsheet to be able to show what they've spent the past two years, and, you know, what are we going to project for the next year, and what kind of categories do we want? Because there's a lot of $100 here, $200 here, and can we combine some of these items so that you don't have to, when it comes to paying those bills, to code them correctly? You don't have to make such a specific decision, you know. So where are we going to be doing these things? So right now, we're in the process of doing that. Our audit was done, and they came up, and they had a couple of issues. And one was that our investments were not in the right rating of bonds. And when I started there, I knew it was, one of them was not in there, but it's coming due in August. So I said, "Well, let's let it ride and not take such a big deduction for taking it out early, and leave it in there at that time," because it was the same issue of the year before, when I looked at the audit. So, you know, making a decision like that was trying to explain to the council was, you know, we could have took it out and put it in a different bond, but it would have costed us a lot more than just leaving it there and then let it cash out, and then turn around and do it properly. So, I was in supply in the military, so another issue in that audit was the inventory for the liquor store. And, you know, so we're implementing a 10% inventory every month, and making sure that those handles are being taken care of. Capital improvement, we're looking, we put away, you know, for the first time, they've put away some money for, you know, investment in the properties, because, you know, your infrastructure starts tearing down.
You have that in the budget, the long-term?
Well, we've put some money away, and yes, we are starting to look at that. This was the last, last year was the first year that they've done that. So we're looking at putting away money for a new fire truck, which is, for a city is, you know, a million-dollar truck, you know. So you got all our fire contracts with the townships, we have implemented a little bit of, you know, having them put in some into this capital improvement project also. So we'll have that set aside for that.
Tyler, I'd just add to that. One of the things that we've discussed quite a bit in our county here lately has been a five-year capital plan for some of those bigger purchases. How would you proceed with that? So I don't know if I'm asking the question right. What are your thoughts on a five-year capital plan for a county our size? Do you think, does that kind of make sense?
It does make sense. Let's say, let's say you're a fleet of trucks in the highway department. You know, how many do you have? How many can you replace each year? You know, and then how long are you going to hold on to them? Because, you know, those can last a long time, but their values can go down quickly. And when you do trade them in or whatever, you have to make sure you get them off the books and things like that. But depends on how many trucks you have, how much you can afford to replace, and how long you're going to expect those, you know, like your facilities or anything like that. How long is it going to last? And so you can kind of get that from, let's say you're looking at your generators or something, you can talk to your facilities maintenance guy and say, "How old is it? How long is it expected to last?" And then should we, you know, look at putting money away for that, you know. So I think that a good reserve would be to have, you know, a good reserve in hand, anywhere from, you know, six months of finances in the reserves to be able to run your organization, and then plus your capital improvement money, so.
We currently, I mean, most of our departments have a five-year plan. Our highway has a very, they're very complete, and our sheriff's department has one. But what we found, what we've been lacking in our five-year plan would probably be more of the IT, you know, the framework for IT, and then maybe there's some of our, like you said, generators or heating and cooling units. I mean, those things, or roofs, you know, you don't sometimes think of those things. But I think that's where we're going, more of a total, rather than just department.
Well, the big part, as you mentioned, sheriff's department is, in the current year, they budget for vehicles. But the problem was delivery, some were two years behind. Well, then that money goes back in the general fund, and it should all be kept in a capital improvement budget.
And do they own their vehicles, or do they lease them?
We own them.
You own them, okay.
Twenty, probably twenty.
You know, and then you have to look at, is that good use of the funds, because they depreciate really quickly? And when I was at Stearns County, we owned half, and we leased half. And then the only vehicles, even though if they're new, we just have...
We have leased some vehicles, and I think over time, it pretty didn't benefit us that much, so.
Yeah, we get in a whole different discussion, but I think you have to go in full bore if you're going to lease. I mean, you can't, and we didn't. We kept trying to do our own maintenance. There's lots of things where...
In my understanding, you don't have a mechanic on hand for the sheriff's vehicles? You have to outsource that?
Correct, we do. We have our mechanics that, we don't do our, most of our, we don't do our sheriff's vehicles for mechanicing.
Yeah, you have the highway, does their...
Does all their own mechanics.
Okay, anyone else? Richard?
Okay. Who do you see being responsible for setting the agenda? What is the role of the commissioner and the county administrator in this process?
Well, the agenda is more an administrative responsibility. Items to be put on the agenda would be where the board members can bring up items that need to be on there and be put on the agenda. But putting it together would be an administrative position.
You gave an example of a time when you, you know, kind of gave a heads-up for an item coming out to the agenda. Could you, what would your consideration be for something that a board member, you mentioned a board member can bring something up. If you thought that was confrontational, how would you handle that?
Well, first, it would be a discussion with the board members, if it's going to be a confrontational item. And then, you know, if it is something that they're very diligent about having on the agenda, you know, is it something that, is it something should be on the agenda first? Is it something that needs to have research done first on those items, and be able to maybe, you know, calm the situation down first? You know, because once you go out there, and let's say you guys vote on an issue, and it's confrontational, if it's a 3-2 vote, or a 4-1 vote, we have to go out of there as one, in unison. So I want to make sure that the information is there correct, and make sure that people have that information before, you know, it being put on the agenda, if it's that confrontational. You know, and sometimes it's not easy. I had a council member, you know, even bring up, say, you know, "I voted against this issue, but if I turn around and allow it in this instance, then our votes don't count anymore." You know, what we decide here won't count anymore, because we're not following through. So it was very nice to see that, even though he didn't agree with what the item was, he'd still back that. Makes sense?
Yeah, I think that's imperative, that you can lose the battle here, but you've got to get, you're on the same team, and have to...
Yeah.
Just to expand on the, just wondering if, how do you, do you connect with the rest of the board or not before? I mean, do you just put that on the agenda, if a board member would ask you to put something on that you see confrontational? Do you, like you said before, would you notify the rest of the board, or the chair, or...
I would definitely notify the chair. First, I'd ask the board member, if this is going to be confrontational, you know, is it okay if I can pass this along? But I don't think, you start getting into having more than one more person on there, then it's making, you know, it could be a liaison-type of meeting. So I don't want to get too involved on something like that. Well, so-and-so said this, and all of a sudden, I give it to everybody, and all of a sudden, we made a board decision, you know.
Yeah, well, it wouldn't be that if you're notifying, like you said in your other situation, if you're notifying the board that this is going to be on the agenda, I'm just giving you a hand up.
But you gave me an example of a board member giving it to me. I hadn't given you an example of something from the outside. Makes sense?
I think in what, how we've managed it in Becker County, and right or wrong, and I don't, it's just our policy, is that the administration manages the agenda, the board chair kind of gives it the final authorization to move forward.
Yeah.
Then some...
And that'd be something where the board chair and I would sit down, you know, prior to the meeting, day before, and make sure that everything's on the...
Yeah, that'd be before the day, before publication.
Before publication, yeah. You know, communication, like I said, you know, you'd have that communication. I have it with the mayor, talk with them constantly. I'd have it with the board chair.
Okay, any other comments? Moving on, please tell us about a time you had to make a decision that was not popular.
Well, I'll give you the same example I gave the department heads, is when I started, there was a decision made about letting a person go at the end of the year because of budget cuts. And I got there, and I got to know the person personally, and it makes it really hard, you know. The person was a 19-year employee, and you had to let them go. And it's like, it was very hard, after you get to know the person, you get to know the spouse, because, you know, being in a small town, you have lunch, and they bring the spouses in sometimes at the chamber, and, you know, they all split pizza or something. And so it made it really hard. And, you know, that was probably the hardest decision to start out with, you know, is to have to give somebody of 19 years of experience. And then all of a sudden, it's a streets person. So now winter, which we had a mild winter, thank goodness, otherwise we'd have been way behind in the snow plowing, because we only have two people then in our streets. So...
What was the reason for the budget shortfall?
They had budget cuts, they had to make some hard decisions, you know. And so they put down the rate increase, because the police department had a big increase, because they couldn't compete. They'd have people there for six months, and they'd leave, six months, and they'd leave. And so they couldn't compete with just the local, other police departments. And so they ended up having an increase there. And the streets department, you know, just didn't have the funds to be able to keep the person. And so that's the way I was told and understood, you know. And so when the people who made the decision, the council was still there who made the final decision, but, you know, the previous administrator, and they made the deputy clerk position part-time, and that person left. So I came in with just the billing clerk and myself. And so was able to fill the deputy clerk position, and, you know, and had to let go of the streets person. And we're able to bring on another PD officer a little bit early, but we're going to be doing some other things through the police department. They're not going to pick up another vehicle right away, and those type of things, to be able to get the full force on the PD. We're still one person short, but at least they can cover all shifts.
All right, Tyler, so next question. Becker County has a culture of providing excellent customer service. What does providing excellent customer service mean to you? And what would you do as a county administrator to ensure customer service, I'm sorry, and what would you, as a county administrator, do to ensure a customer service-driven organization? Do you want me to repeat the whole thing?
Right of customer service in that one. And that's what we're here for, is the customers. As a risk manager, my customers were employees, and then also the constituents. And outside of that, there's other people throughout the state that comes through the county. So we have a lot of different kinds of customers, but when we're looking at Becker County, we need to make sure that our constituents are, either they're getting heard and are satisfied with what the results are, or have an understanding why they didn't get this result they wanted. You know, because you're not going to make everybody happy, but when you have somebody there right in front of you, you give them the attention they need and listen to them. And then, you know, if you have the answer, give them the answer, and, you know, satisfy what they need, or let them know that you're going to get back to them. You'll do the research, and then what you have to do is make sure you get back to them. You know, if I'm going to get back, I'm going to look into this, I'll get back to you Friday, and make sure you get back to them Friday. And that is where you're going to get satisfaction from the people. You know, they may not be the answer they want. You know, they may not be the answer they want, not always. But at least you're getting back to them and they understand why.
Other comments?
Okay. What do you think is the biggest challenge facing counties today?
Well, if it's anything to do with government above them, you know, in the state, you know, that if things don't get done at the state level, you know, for funds and things are getting tied up. And, you know, we, we at the local government are looking to get those funds into our system. You know, we, we have a 10 and a half million dollar grant that is being held up, you know, because we didn't get part of the legislation taken out so we could keep moving forward. So now we still have to make that third piece to be able to start releasing those funds. So it's a big clog in the wheel, you know? So I think that decisions being made and being able to adapt to them. We took out a $2 million loan to get through so we can design the well to get that project approved by the PFA and get the things going so we can pay off that loan at the same time. But otherwise we would have been going bankrupt. So being able to adapt and adjust to the changing times. And that could be any, any department in the organization, you know, their, their ability to, you know, swivel because something changed is, is crucial. And, you know, talking to the people upstairs, they're, you know, very good at swinging, you know, turning, swiveling on the dime, so.
Better ask fast. One of our goals to build our efforts to support community and workplace that is welcoming and inclusive. How, how will you contribute to this goal? A welcome, welcoming and inclusive environment?
Well, it's being, you know, doing the things the right, the, the first time, you know? We have people who are coming in here are needing something most of the time. You know, you have different departments. You have the human services department. They have, you have your veteran service officers. You have the highway department. You have all these different places that people can come in and, you know, make sure that they are feeling heard and being part of it. So it would be making sure that we advertise things correctly, making sure that we get our information out there. We're doing a comprehensive plan update right now. And I, you know, me as the IT person has to put out all the different things that make sure people are able to see it on our, on our Facebook page and on our, you know, the city webpage. And so we've already had for a small organization, organization, we had 130 people already respond to that. So we are doing a good job of getting that out there to make sure people are inclusive.
Describe your experience working collaboratively with other units of government or organizations. Describe how building these types of relationships benefited the community or organization you worked for.
Well, right now we, I went, I went to a conference and met the Moore City Administrator. And we talked about collaborating, possibly working with a billing official and making sure that we had, we, we outsource it, he has one. He says, well, maybe we can do is share the person, you know? And make sure it would be beneficial for both of us, you know? And we, I go and work with the city administrator from Cambridge and Ixani a lot of times when I want to do a policy and say, oh, you're doing this. To make sure that I'm doing it the same way, we want to make sure we're doing it and be consistent. Everybody is on the same, even though your organization does it just a little bit differently. But make sure that you have the right things in those policies. Working with the county ditch authority, you know, and that, for me, that, we have a ditch that goes right through the city and we, we need that thing cleaned out. And especially with our waste treatment facility starting up. We have 30, 35 million gallons are going to get dewatered. We may need that ditch cleaned, vegetation cleaned out so it can flow. So those type of things are, you know, making sure that we work together in different organizations.
Tell us about an experience where you evaluated a program, service or policy to determine whether it was producing a desired result.
Well, and, you know, we all have different reasons why we have to update policies. And you look at the results of what you're doing by, you know, is the policy that you've put in place doing what it's supposed to? And what you do is you can do an assessment of that. Right now, you know, the biggest thing was we did that earned safety and sick time policy. When we put it in place as the state wanted it to be. But our system, our HR system couldn't separate, it could separate the, we give more sick time than what is earned. So there was a little portion that needed to be put in there. You couldn't just put a single digit in that little extra sick time. So it wasn't doing what it was intended to do. So we tweaked the policy a couple of months after we had it to say that we are going to use the earned safety and sick time. And it's all-inclusive in our sick time leave that we're giving people already. And that we are, anybody who uses sick time is, the first 40 hours is going to be against that ESST. So we can make sure we're managing it properly also.
Okay, next question, Tyler. Describe your experience working actively on legislative issues affecting or impacting the community you have worked for.
Well, I would say when I was working at Stearns County, I was in an organization for the risk managers. And we really were looking at the PTSD. And we made sure that our lobbyists for our organizations were, you know, making sure that that was not just something that's going to get paid out. It was really kind of making it real easy. The legislation was going to make it real easy and it was going to cost a lot of money to cities and counties. And so we weren't against it, but we wanted to make sure that it was being utilized properly. And so legislation came out on that. And, you know, we still are working through those issues. But not being a risk manager, I haven't been following it as much.
Okay, thank you. Describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards.
Well, I'd say that being is an issue that, let's say, recently was just a payroll issue, you know? The person, it was a snow event and they couldn't come in. And they wanted to take sick time because, you know, it was in the policy saying something about, if you're not able to make it, sick time could be used. But I, I said, well, let's take a look at this. And we went in there and, you know, I could have just said, it was one of my employees. I could have said, yeah, it's fine, we'll do it that way. But we went through the policy and I said, right here it says when it's an event like that, you have to use your, your leave, you know, your, leave that urine. So it's not, you know, you can always just wave a wand or something. But if you don't start going against a policy, then everybody's going to want to go against it. You know, it's working with the, the, you know, the police union. And we have them, it's our only union and they always want to have something more. And when that came to that ESST and, you know, you wanted to come and talk to me about it because, you know, you can't make people as, I sat down with them and I explained to them, I don't have a system that can separate those. You know, if I could work with you, I would and I have with, in the past on other things, but I can't do it with this. I said, my hands are tied and so, and he understood that. So he walked away with a, you know, meeting me and then was happy to walk away and say, yeah, you're right, Tyler, you, you got to do it that way.
Burr. What concerns you most about this job?
The past. You know, you've had three administrators in four years. And, you know, watching some of the board interactions online, you know, that's, that's concerning. But, you know, I, I look at it as moving forward, what can we do? You know, like I said, if we're going to be making decisions, we got to walk out of there as a team. And can, can I be that person who makes a, you know, the, bring the team together? You know, I'm, I'm a, I'm a football official. I got, I got my crew and we make decisions together, you know? And sometimes we make mistakes. That's okay. We learn from those mistakes. But moving forward, we won't make that mistake again.
Okay, Richard.
As a follow-up to your research of our organization and community, what are you most excited about?
Well, the opportunities that are here. You know, we, you have such a thriving community. You have a lot of industrial, you have a lot of commercial, you have a good balance of things going on. It's, it looked like that when I drove through the, down by the lake, you have a lot of things going on down there, being rejuvenated and, you know, there's a lot of things that excite me about the area, you know? And things that you guys are making a difference on, you know? So it's, it's an exciting place. It's Detroit Lakes is, you know, when I went to NDSU for a couple of years, we came over here, our first break that we had and went to the lakes and, you know.
Started a bunch of trouble. Because I remember, I remember when you were down.
It was the football team, so. You know, there's a little bit of trouble.
Okay. Other comments?
No.
Okay, why should Becker County Board select you as their next county administrator?
Because I'm the right fit, you know? It'd be, what I've read, there's some things that, you know, I will learn. I know that I, I'm not perfect. I'm not going to be the perfect candidate, nobody is. But I think it's the continuity and, you know, being the right fit to be able to be in this position is very important. I get, I get along with the community, you know, back where I'm at. And I'm sure I can bring that right here also. You know, and like I said, communication is my big thing. I want to make sure that I over-communicate. So that you, you feel comfortable when you're going in and making your decisions.
Good, thanks. Last question. Do you, do you have any questions for us?
Well, let's see, can I pull? What was, what was the main reason why you let go of the last administrator? I mean, you can read and do all this, but what was the main reason? I don't want to do that, so.
I think communication relationship, I think probably under, is underlying, was, was the underlying thing. And I, I think, I think this board has put, this full board has put it behind. We've, we've obviously seen disagreement on everything and, and had those battles. And, and I think this board has put that, put that behind us, you know, whether, who was right, who was wrong. There's, there's fault, you know, we all are, we all have fault. And I truly believe this board is, is moving forward and so.
I agree, I think communication was the big issue. And I believe we are moving in the right direction. And we need someone that'll help us do that, continue to do that.
Any other questions, office? This is about to our time. Minute and a half.
All right. What's the most exciting thing you see happening in Becker County right now?
I think overall, and I, I told you this upstairs, our trolls are pretty exciting. I think, I think that's, you know, it's something that's new to us. But I think there's, there's lots of, I think there's lots of things that are exciting. You know, of course we have our controversies too, but.
The one thing I find exciting, or maybe more so my job, is the, the fact that I want to provide our residents more opportunities for recreation activities is one of the things. And obviously there's all the old standbys, we need better, more housing for the working class, you know, to try to get those things. But, you know, the lakes, unless you have a lot of money, you can't afford to be on the lakes anymore. I mean, it's, it's becoming more difficult. So we, I want to try to make lake opportunities and recreation opportunities for everyone in the county. You know, those people that live here and do the work. So I think we want to make sure, we, we're a very big tourism area, but we want to make sure our residents are, are getting benefits from, from our, from the success of the county overall.
Okay, one last question. Can one of you give me a spiel to convince me to come here if you choose me?
Like, I, I guess I'll be the one.
Oh, go ahead.
I think, you know, you, you mentioned one of the things that worried you was our past. And, and, you know, we, we had a, we have had our struggles the last year or so. But I think one of the things we've learned, and you said it right, is that we need to, to make that decision and leave it at the board and unite. And I think, I think this board has done a good job of that the last couple of months of, of moving forward and really doing what's best for the, the citizens of Becker County.
I, I think also you said, work as a team, teamwork's together. I like that. That's the reason why you should come here.
Okay.
And we're close to five of your grandchildren.
Why is that?
Are we, what's our next step, sir? I mean, what is her, is she coming in?
I think she's going to tell us the feedback.
She said there was, last, she mentioned to me that she had one comment.
Oh, that's it?
That's it. Unless she received some more, so.
Well, there was, I saw a few people write.
Yeah, she only had one feedback.
You mean from up in?
Other state department heads or?
I think she'll go through to. I think she'll go through to the feedback from the department heads from the, their interview.
That, that could be, she probably, wasn't referring to that, it's probably. Or from the meeting or.
Yeah.
Written, uh.
Maybe it was just one written from stakeholders.
Yeah, it's tough making all that water.
Yeah, 3:15 she started, burned down the public. Good break, gotta make a decision. Be out here by 5:30.
Oh God, I hope, I hope so.
The act did have a little tour.
Yeah, they did, yeah. Yeah, they went, uh, where'd they go, they went to children.
Children, I don't know, they, they built their, old mountain, probably.
Yeah, I, I, when Mitch, I talked, I think I emailed Mitch and told him that. He didn't get it, he could reschedule 10 times or something.
Most of it's been to all the spots, so.
Yeah.
We'll be waiting for the department directors and getting their feedback before we can, before I can share the feedback.
Okay. Perfect, well, they got water up there.
Welcome upstairs.
Well, I got, I'm just jerking walking. Where did the school call me, the school? Okay, it's probably.
Kids, did they eat here or? Add a plate like you're definitely.
Could've been raped the voice. Hey, I think, um, she switched out two games yesterday. I think I left one of the packs of receipt, not receipt.
Are we still online or recording?
When they take payouts, I think I left one of them in the safe.
Yep, so she was.
She, no, no, I left the, she put new, you know, gave me the new, like payout tickets. And I think I left one of the sets in, still in the safe, I think, because I didn't, it didn't get in the bag. And I knew there was two, but I couldn't find the other. I just, when I grabbed it, I had, there was one and I thought, well, maybe there's only one, so. Or it's on the desk maybe, I don't know. Yeah, but I did only put one out, so maybe it fell down the side or something. Are you there? Oh, okay, whatever, I'm, I'm still at the, still at the courthouse, but I'll stop in there afterwards. No. Okay. Uh, we've probably got a couple hours here, I mean, oh, yeah. We're interviewing for our candidates for MISR, we're important. Okay, sounds good, be back. I suppose she's still recording this, isn't she?
I think so.
No, no, just on the phone, I guess. Answered that. Man, that turned my off. So Liza, I heard you were going on vacation.
Yes, um, my daughter is studying abroad in Spain, so.
Oh, cool.
I told her I would be willing to take her over there. Make sure she.
Glad you volunteered.
Gets there safely, yep, yep, so. Her and I are leaving Wednesday, not tomorrow, but next Wednesday and we'll tour for about 11 days. And then I drop her off with her group and then head home.
Sweet, that's always fun.
Yeah, yeah, we've been really excited about it, so.
Cool. The brother and his wife are going to Scotland until, um, in July.
Yes, my brother-in-law is too, is it for the, the open or the British Open?
I, I don't know if they're gonna go watch it or not, I don't know. I'm not sure, it might be just coincidence.
Okay.
But they might.
That would be a crazy coincidence.
Talk to them much more.
Okay.
But, yeah, it sounds like fun, I, she said you could still go with, I go, wow, I got a lot going on.
Yeah, well, that's neat.
Yeah, no, it should be fun.
Oh, my brother-in-law, he threw his name in the hat for a drawing and it sounds like chances are pretty good that you're gonna get the ticket. So I think he knew that going into it, my sister-in-law said he knew this. So she's like, sure enough, you got a day, a practice day and then, so, I think he bought an additional ticket so they'll actually get to be there when the tournament starts.
That's, it sounds like fun, I never, I've never, obviously you'd see it on TV, but I've never imagined it looks like that.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I do have the feedback from all three groups, the staff, the stakeholders and the department directors. Um, I can bring the staff member to take minutes while we, before we proceed, if you're ready.
Oh, my, my dumpster, my, my business on Sunday was full. I threw, oh, some old pieces of chicken, it was bad. I got there Monday morning and there were just, there was like five cats, I mean, it was, it was rotten chicken. I mean, it was so bad, I don't know how they can get sick from that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Animals' stomachs are.
They must be like ironed, I mean, I need one of those stomachs.
Okay.
All right. Well, so you've engaged in a few activities today, this is kinda part of that, that final process. Um, you've had a chance to take a look at their background information before entering in today. Um, our candidate, our finalists had an opportunity to take a tour of the county. Uh, the meet and greet is most of you were at today and that, or all of you were at, and then the interviews with you and with the department director. So the feedback that I have, I received two forms, two feedback forms from stakeholders, one from a staff member. Both of those were at the meet and greet and then I have the department director. So I'll just start with stakeholders. Ask for a very simple question, what are your general impressions? What strengths would this candidate bring to the role? How do you see them not only fitting in with the county, but with its partner organizations? And then any other comments that they feel would be helpful to you in your deliberations? So first question, what are your general impressions regarding Tyler Trickle? Friendly, open, somewhat soft-spoken, works in a smaller community, prepared and thoughtful. What are your general impressions regarding Carrie Smith? Confident, experienced, friendly, open and wise. What strengths would this candidate bring to the administrator position? The stakeholders commented regarding Tyler Trickle. Understands law enforcement hiring process, crisis and prepared to react to it. Honest, flexible, creative. What strengths would Carrie Smith bring to the administrator role? Understands Becker County, Detroit Lakes, seems to have wisdom regarding this county and the politics in our area. Question number three, describe how you believe this candidate would fit in with the county and its partner organizations. Tyler Trickle, uh, your stakeholders commented, has potential to do well. 20-plus years of experience and diverse background. Regarding Carrie Smith, she's already doing really well. Becker doesn't need to be a training facility for our most important position, we need someone with knowledge and experience. Final question, provide any comments that would be helpful to the county board in its deliberations regarding Tyler Trickle. Appreciated meeting him during our short visit, seems like a good man. He listed, key point is, in quotation marks, people working together. Becker County needs to focus on unity, especially with the current employee and commission, commission and commissioner issues we have been following. Um, any other comments regarding Carrie Smith? Was impressed with way she carried herself and awareness of current situation and issues. All right, the staff feedback form, general impressions regarding Tyler Trickle. More quiet and subdued, nice personality and seems like a very kind, genuine person. General impressions regarding Carrie Smith, professional and well-presented. What strengths would Tyler Trickle bring to the position? Trust and likability. What strengths would Carrie Smith bring? Knowledge of Becker County, no training time, continued good performance. Um, describe how you believe this candidate would fit in with the county and its partner organizations. The one sole comment is, I think both candidates could do well. And then any other comments that would be helpful to the county board in its deliberations regarding Tyler Trickle? Seems like he may lack a take-charge aspect, but seems he would be well-liked and would foster environment of staff enjoying and trusting their administrator. He will start at a disadvantage, being new to the area, but can overcome in time. Any other comments regarding Carrie Smith? I've personally been impressed with the job Carrie has done as interim administrator, well-spoken, professional and ha, and hard-working. I believe there is a bit of a dark cloud that will hang with her from the Pat Omen era that she will need to overcome still and allow everyone to fully close that chapter of Becker County. Fair or not, that would likely be a burden that would fall on her shoulders. All right, and then your department directors, I'll spread this out. Um, all right, same four questions, general impressions regarding Carrie Smith. This is from your department, um, directors. Articulate, casual tone, well-qualified, experienced candidate, appears to be eager for role and responsibility. Displays collaboration and leadership traits. May deal with difficult choices because of prior history and relationships with staff and the organization, but has displayed ability to make ethical choices. Seems a bit hesitant, verbally admitted to be in the public spotlight. Appears to want to be here and willing to learn, wants a challenge. Strong leader and fair, easy to talk to, has good government experience as well as community experience. Comfortable at interviewing, answered questions well. Personable, listens, natural leader, great listener, upright and fair-minded. Willing to learn and admit that if she makes a mistake, make sure she does not use the previous county administrator as a sounding board or reference. Knowledgeable, confident, very frank, confident, organized thoughts. What are your general impressions regarding Tyler Trickle? Professional and friendly, appears to make ethical choices based on standards and policy, relies on trust and relationships and puts faith in supervisors and management around him. Has room to grow in some roles of the job description or understanding of responsibilities. Open, honest, believes in full disclosure when applicable, calm demeanor. Seems to want to truly get to know all staff and public to see what needs and concerns are and also what to do, what they do. Seems nice and easy to have a conversation with. Spoke well, understood and answered questions well, provided good examples to all the questions. Knowledgeable of government operations, appears to have good leadership skills. Personable, seems to listen, team player. Good communication skills, understands his role and relationship with the county board and staff. Has familiarity in areas. Would move here, vested in the community, less. Uh, less competent to address wide range of topics and concerns, or less capable to address wide range of topics and concerns. Um, can develop, develop, um, department prospects to address concerns. Can develop departments and projects to address concerns, I apologize. Um, average.
Sounds like you're reading my agenda.
Rather quiet, thoughts maybe not as organized, seems very nice yet confident. All right, what strengths would these candidates bring to the administrator role? So first was Carrie Smith. Knowledge of current issues, easy transition, extensive knowledge of public administration, budgeting, human resource, social work, prior work experience as interim, uh, role, desire to take on this responsibility. Manages relationships well and lots, and looks at situations objectively. Has gotten toes wet to have a beginning understanding of the position. Has background experience of current workplace culture, legislative experience. Treats people fairly and gives same info to all as allowed, example, not non-public information. Many years of experience with growth through different roles, open to feedback. Communication, listening, capable. Extensive public service background, leadership, transparent, integrity, fair-minded. Willing to listen and willing to take in hard social issues, for instance, White Earth. Willing to draw from the county board a direction. Will lean to allocate out work. Where staff and understands her role. Years of public service, knows the board and department heads, a knowledge that comes with two years of having worked here. All right, what strengths would Tyler Trickle bring to the role? Fresh start, new ideas, collaborative with department heads, honesty and work ethic, ability to maintain relationships and avoid contentious or political bias. Risk, safety management, policy and structure follow-through. Willing to follow policy and get to know each and every department. Appears to be someone to go to without preconceived ideas and notions and willing to listen. Doesn't appear to micromanage staff, admits that each department knows their job and he is there to help and not run each department. Seems like he'd be a good leader. I do have some reservations about a comment he made about employees talking to him more than the department heads. Knowledge of various, uh, department operations engages with all employees, exhibits leadership skills, communication. Communication and a government background. Good communicator, honest, no BS while communicating. Follow policy, keep the board unified, take problems to the board. He referenced a $60,000 water bill and then no comment. Moving on to the third question, describe how you believe this candidate would fit with the county and its partner organizations. So again, we'll start with Carrie Smith. Has done admirable job in the interim, listens to department heads and peers. Unsure of how we'll adapt to working with city of Detroit Lakes, state of Minnesota, et cetera. Unimpressed with all the H R policy changes in her H R tenure, do not want massive county policy changes. Has the org, advantage of past experience and relationships in this organization role. Has maintained or implemented relationships with department heads. Experience in ongoing initiatives, projects, objectives and budgets. Already involved in ongoing items such as the White Earth tribal land discussion, the accepted salary and comp study, department processes and their needs. Um, this person wrote, both of them would fit very well. Would fit in very well, learning on the job, she has the capacity to do the position. Professional knowledge, honorable, well-rounded, easy to relate with, great fit. I can work with Carrie, she's a great fit. Based on experience and work and serving on a council, Carrie would fit well in this role. She has proven she fits well. How do you believe Tyler would fit in with the county and its partner organizations? Has advantage of current knowledge of city. Has advantage of current knowledge of city structure, concerns with going from small city to much larger county structure. Has ability to maintain good standing with current relationships. May lack knowledge of some relationships not dealt with, with prior position and strategic execution of partnerships. Seems willing to let everyone do their jobs and would take in any and all information to collaborate and work with all to come to the best scenario and action. Would come in without preconceived notions and thoughts. I think he would fit well. Has good experience in different levels of government and understands department functions and collaborating with other agencies. I believe Tyler could fit in with our current environment in the cities and towns of Becker County. Respectful, sociable, approachable, no issues fitting in. Has capacity to take on different concerns, may take on too much personally. Average. And then again, the comment, both would be, would fit very well here. All right, final question, any other comments that would be helpful to the county board in its deliberations regarding Carrie Smith? Concerns with some general sloppiness in emails, wording, et cetera. Concerned about lack of statutory knowledge could be a good unifier for the county. Has necessary and relevant experience to do job duties. Expresses desire to grow and learn more in role, continue work in organization and values, impact of work. Possible concerns have already been trained by previous administrators to following or implementing policy, et cetera. May have taken previous administrator issues to make changes, could be good. She seems to think things through thoroughly. Community service and volunteerism. Willing to listen to everyone, won't cave under pressure. Very stable person, good longevity in positions. She will stay with the county through difficult times, very engaged in community issues. No comment. I think Carrie will be easy to work with. Carrie is sincere in her job and wants to work here. No comment. All right. Finally, provide any other comments that would be helpful to the county board in its deliberations regarding Tyler Trical. Relatively unknown, is risk management experience helpful in leading and managing a county? Can fit in well with the organization and community culture. Installs sense of trust or reassurance in team members. Treats others with respect and fairness. But may rely on initiatives to be developed or followed through by department heads. Like that he would be a clean slate. Appears to be very approachable and willing to listen and learn about all departments. Appears to be open and honest and truly interested. I feel Tyler was, has good leadership skills and would perform well in the position even if he is lacking some experience. I believe I can work with Tyler, no comment. Minimal experience managing a large organization. Asked what works for Becker County. Morale starts from top down. Army experience and then no comment. So those were your feedback forms. Anything that you want me to repeat? All right. So with that information. This is typically the time where I would ask each of you to share who you feel is, who you personally feel is the right fit. And then after you name the person, then that's where discussion can enter the room. So I don't know if you feel that's, that this is the time to do that, but that's typically how I move into that process.
So I think for me, I don't want to name anybody yet, but I think for me, one of, one of my concerns is that we only interviewed two. You know, we had, we had three people, we had a back, backup person named. And of course, because of the late withdrawal, we weren't able to do it. But that, that is when I think this is a pretty big position and for us to have only been able to interview two is a little bit of a struggle for me. So I just wanted to say that.
I watched something on Facebook, so it's true.
But, but it said, how do you, you know, there, it was a seminar and they said, how do you know who the right person is? And they said, you don't. You don't, you don't know who's right. It's, there's no magic wand that can tell us who's, who will do the best job. I mean, that's where it's struggled, this is so important and I feel it's so important for us to, and I, I don't know, I don't have that magic wand, I don't know. I certainly would have liked to seen three candidates also, I mean, I think that, that would have been a little bit, you just have another, another aspect to look at or another.
Yeah, after that, our third one dropped out, I did review the next one. And to me, probably lacking actual county experience and has a lot of other experience and probably in leadership roles, but I think that's why, we have to move on and decide what we want to do today.
I think both of those candidates we had were very good. That's what, I, I feel that either one could do a good job here. Although I do know Carrie and I have trust in her, I think she's honest. I think she cares about people, I think she could do a good job here. I, I think Tyler could too, but I know her better and I would feel, I would, I would, for, for, for what I've learned about her in this process, I've learned more about her in this process here. And I think she could do a good job here. I, I mean, I'd have loved to seen somebody with a whole bunch of experience and we, and, and really did a good job somewhere and was just shining in everything. I don't know if we're going to see anything different than what we seen tonight. I really liked Tyler too, I, I thought, you know, but I think, I think Carrie's done a good job here. So that would be, I, I, I think we need to get, we need to move on something here, that's my opinion. I think it's fair that we move on something, it's, it has gone the way it's gone, we did only have two to choose from. But I, I would choose Carrie. Not way over and above Tyler, but just, just from what I know. And I, I think once she learns this job, I think, I think she could do a really good job here. That's my opinion.
The one thing with, Tyler's got a lot of good experience. The only thing in his interview, it kind of disturbed me a little bit where he started getting into rambling on and just kind of talking in circles a little bit. Carrie was more direct, stated the question.
I think, I have to agree with Richard, I've learned a lot about Carrie. You know, through this, you know, and, and, and understanding more of her background and I think she, I have, I have reservations. You know, I've, I've talked to, you know, I've heard from employees that are concerned. I've heard, you know, some, some of the things that were said today. I have them same, same reservations, but I do think she's done a, a good job the last couple of months, you know, both, or neither candidate, I guess I should say, have strong experience. So I, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how I feel yet.
Well, I know it's a couple of the comments, the policy change. You know, some people are against change. They've been this way for 30 years, why change? What, just going through the, our personnel policy, it needed to be updated. There's a lot of data and things aren't even in there that were statutorily correct, so. Yeah, nobody likes to see a lot of.
Is there any way we can just maul on, I mean, I mean, we've got a lot of information, we can look back on our notes and, and I don't, I don't know that I'm prepared to make a decision now. I mean, it, there's a lot, a lot of things that go in your, through your mind and an example, we, we went through the assessor, we didn't, we kind of had the same thing, but we waited, we, we, we got back as a committee and had that, should we, should we, you know, it was just a short teams meeting, but these are the things, you know. Okay, we, we all agreed, I mean, but sometimes you just need to, I don't know, I might need to step back just to review, self review.
I think, personally, I think we need to make a decision and move on. It's, either way, it's not fair to Carrie to keep strapping her with two, two jobs.
Right.
And she's busy in both. And I know she's got good staff that helps her. You know, we're still in the midst of mediations and a lot of things on the plate, so.
She stood up, took this job when a lot of people wouldn't have. And I was really glad, we really needed somebody to do it and, you know. I, I think she could grow in and be a really good administrator just because of who she is. She's not afraid of things, she's honest, she follows policy. And so I, I think we do need, I, I don't need to, I've, I've seen, this is what we've got, Liza's brought us these people from a list of what she had. And, yeah, so I don't, I don't need to take any more time. I, I think it is, you know, for me, it is time to get somebody in there and we've done this process and so, and I think it's, it's only fair to, to move along here, especially she has done, she has been doing both jobs and that's not easy. I agree with John that we really, we really need to make, need to make a decision and, and just live with it, it's, you know.
Couple of things that stand out about Carrie that I have probably been involved with a little bit as far as a couple of elected department heads, getting them on the same page as far as interviews and to include HR. And that is a big step. And I think since then, our interview process and our hiring process has improved.
It's improved immensely, so. It really has, it was terrible, I couldn't believe how bad it was trying to hire somebody and now it's changed completely, so.
I think for me, this, this is, this is a decision that I agree needs to be made, but it's also a very big decision. You know, it's a decision that I, I don't know that we, I'm one that I, I need to really think things through. You know, I don't want to make decisions on the, decisions this big on the fly without really, really thinking it through. So while I, I agree, we need to make a decision soon, I don't know that we need to make a decision today.
Yeah, I think we've had the background information on these candidates for quite a while, research. I guess I'm ready to move forward today. I think it's fair to most candidates and knowing that, just drag it out.
Well, and I, and I hear your guys, I, I just want to always, always point out that we can go back and re-advertise also, I'm not suggesting we do that, but that, that is an option too and I'm not saying that we should do that. But, I mean, you want to make sure you look at all your options and, and you don't make a vote, you don't take decisions just because you think you have to. I don't, I think it's very important to, to make these decisions in a thoughtful, and if you're not comfortable yet, I don't, I mean, I just think that there, in the past, I've been guilty of rushing those decisions and I think it's, if you're, if you need some time to just reflect and you might come all back to the same decision, just, we all might be on the same page. It's just, some people need to digest, this was the first time we've met Tyler, I mean, this first date. So we've had information, this is the first meeting, so. I, I don't, or we can thinking the 11th, I'm, I'm just thinking if it's, I mean, we want to act quickly, I'm not, I mean, it's not like I want to delay this on the decision for this, but.
I have concerns about both candidates. And I would like to think about it a little bit, but I don't want to think about both of them, does that make sense? You know what I mean?
You're not thinking about it?
I don't know, maybe we can just talk a little bit and just say some of the things that we, that we heard today. Maybe the, maybe our dialogue can help us make a decision today, I don't know.
One concern that I have with Tyler is his, of his not experience in working in a larger organization. So for example, like in his city right now, he's the administrator, the HR director, the IT director, the, I don't know, he's all those things, it's like, it's like him being a superintendent of a small school. He's in, he's in, he's all that. Business manager probably. So my concern is, does he know how to allow people to do those jobs? Does he, you know, is he, I, I think he probably has the ability to do that. But this, then that goes back to managing people and allowing them to do their jobs. So that's one of my concerns about him. I, I like how he answered some of the other questions. I do agree with John, he kind of got off track a little bit when he was answering some questions and was kind of rambling a little bit, but I, I, one thing I like about him is he's genuine, he's straightforward. And I think that if he needed to, he could make a decision that could be a tough one. I also believe that Carrie can do that too. But that's my take on.
I had concerns on both, on, on number, question number four, on the developing an annual budget and, I mean, they were both, in my opinion, weak in, in the budgeting part of it. Carrie referenced her time at Glendon and looked at cost savings for independent departments, so she worked with department heads going line by line, I think so she said it, which, which is good. It's, it's a little bit of a, I mean, you're looking at it at a different angle than a, someone that's been well versed in that. And then Tyler was, I mean, they're still using some paper and paper copies and so that the technology just isn't there for him to step into this role either. The one thing he did say that I really liked is he looked at a previous audit and saw that, that, that that bond was coming to, that he, you know, he knew was in a red flag for the audit, but it was cost effective for them to hold on to it. And I thought that was a good, I mean, he was forward thinking enough to look at a past audit to find out what the deficiencies were to help with that. So, I mean, weak on it, but then has a, has an idea of what to, to look for.
One thing that I will say about Carrie is that she has done a really good job of communicating with us and informing us. And she recognized that when she came on, that she noticed that that was an issue, so I think she's done a good job of that. I do have, I do have reservations about everything that's happened prior to her becoming the interim administrator, I have some serious reservations. I, there's a lot of issues that are good, but she's, like I said, she's, I, I think she probably has the ability to, to communicate and overcome some of those, but I don't know. I don't, I don't know for sure, I'm not, I don't know. I know I'm rambling like some rambler.
Well, as far as her interim, I think she's done, done well and I think she's taken it to a different level than what, I mean, a better level, I mean, she's done better than what, I, I think she's done that well and I, and it's a learning curve for all departments and all. all departments and all administrators. She doesn't have the past knowledge of, you know, what, what works and what doesn't as being a former administrator, so. Um, and I don't know that any of our candidates have that, so.
None of them did.
You know, Carrie has done, I mean, I, I think she's, she's got things that she can do better on and I think that we can, I think we can work with those and, um, I, I noticed one comment was the, the emails and, and text messages, kinda the, what was it, what was it from one of the department heads, uh?
Written communication.
Written communication was, wasn't?
There was.
I think that, that needs to be improved upon, on the content and, and timeliness, maybe?
Punctuation.
Pardon me?
Sloppiness.
Concerns with some general sloppiness in emails, wording, et cetera, concerned about lack of statutory knowledge.
Ooh, I haven't noticed any sloppiness, but.
One, one other thing that, the concern of Jeff Carrie is, is the attention to detail. For example, we have a, some, we have a resolution that's incorrectly worded. It's not, it's not a major, major issue, but it could have been if it wasn't caught by something, by, by somebody, now, we obviously approved it, but it'll be, it will have to correct the wording. But that's something to me that needs to be better, 'cause we can't have resolutions that affect, you know, employees like that one could.
I look at what she's been through and so I'm not gonna pick on any of that, to me, Dave, I don't see that. When I look at what she came here and had to work with, which was terrible, because our hiring process was terrible, there was so many problems here, it was unbelievable. And then the battle with our administrator, she went through all of that and now she's been doing everything here. So, um, to me, somebody that can do all of that and, and took this position, I don't know why she took this position, uh, I'm glad she did because she's done a good job at it, but she, she's been put in a really hard spot and she's done very well. Now, I could pick, anybody could sit and pick things apart, but for, I think she's a strong leader and I think that's very important. She's also fair and she's, for what she's been thrown into, she's done a good job. And I, I'm, I'm just lucky I got, and I, and I look back at, at her history, I didn't know any of this stuff until I read, read, read what she's done, so.
Yeah.
To me, she's been amazing that she's done all this and, uh.
I think Carrie has, has done a good job, you know, in, with this interim and, um, I was also very surprised of her, and I know I said this before, but I, I mean, I did learn a lot about her and I, I very much appreciate her, her, her background. And I think as far as the attention to detail and the, and the written communication, I do think that that is something that can be worked through. Um, you know, and, you know, I don't know how, but I mean, her knowing it and her just, you know, understanding the importance of it, I think, um, can help.
I think some of that communication or emails too, it might have to do with playing two roles, really push the.
Well, it was, it was there, you know, in, in just HR and I think, you know, maybe just her knowing it and, um, what, as, as administrator, it's a very big role in, in punctuation and grammar is gonna reflect on us as a county, so I just think that that's, that's something that is important, but can be worked through.
Any other thoughts, comments? If we don't make a decision today, we could make it next Tuesday at our board meeting. But I think we have to move on.
We could call a meeting Friday too, couldn't we?
Pardon?
You could call a meeting Friday morning too, just for the one item?
You, you guys already have my decision, so I'm not coming back to any more meetings, you know, either we can do this or you, this might decide, I don't need three days to think about it. I've looked at it, I've looked, I know her, I've looked at everything, so you can have a meeting, but I, that's where I, I'm at, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna come and hash this over again. I've already said everything I got to say, so. You guys go ahead and have a meeting, don't know me, I gotta go to work. I've spent the whole day doing this today and it's cost me a couple grand today, so, you know, your stuff's in the field growing, my stuff is all sitting on a trailer waiting for somebody to start operating.
What's, what's the options then? What are, what are, in, in situations, what, what is a normal procedure then? What, if, if we either act on it today or what is, what is there another option for?
Sure. So typically, a decision is made right after relaying discussion, uh, the feedback, and then I ask the board to make a motion and then I ask the board to appoint a negotiating committee to work through the negotiating terms with me. I act as the go-between, between the finalist and the, the decision makers and once there's a verbal agreement that's made, then I insert those terms into an agreement, which then is forwarded on to an official meeting where then it's reviewed and formally approved. You know, if the decision is not made today, then yes, I'd be seeking, you know, direction from the board, when would you like to make that decision and then be on the ready to begin the negotiations at that point. You know, I can certainly queue up as much as I can into an agreement, so if it's not tied up in a neat bow before next Wednesday.
Do you, would you, would you like, I mean, do we have a ranking, I mean, we could rank, I mean, as a ranking, these two candidates and then if we're today and then if we wanna, and then we're still hasn't, I mean, do you want us to rank them now? I mean, with this sheet and then handed to you and, um, and if we're not, I mean, then the option is, I mean, if we, we might all be in agreement on who's the number one and two, but we're just, you know, are, then what if, I'm just, what, what do we, I mean, if we want more time to be, or to look at another candidate with just the two or, or, you know, if we had three today, it would have been a little bit nicer to compare three rather than just two?
Sure. So, yes, um, seeing rankings and to see if, if, yeah, whether if there's even a consensus at this point, that can also help move along a, a decision. But if you're, so I guess I'm leaning towards you. If you're ready to move that point, then yes, I would accept those, but if you're not.
I'm ready to move on today.
Okay.
I could rank them, I, I don't think my rankings are gonna change much more than I was when I first ranked.
I think for me, of, of the two that we, that we saw today, I would favor Carrie. My, my apprehension is just that we only interviewed two, you know, that, so that, that's where I'm at, I think. And I don't, I don't, I don't know that we have the time to go back and, I mean, we do have the time because we're, we don't need, need to make a decision today, but we, you know, I know, I know Carrie's, you know, frustrated with, um, you know, she, she has had a lot on her plate. So that, that's just, that's where I'm at. If, if we wanna talk about the, the two that we had today, I, I would lean towards Carrie, but with apprehension that we were only able to interview two.
Well, the other one that we would get, we didn't, he didn't rank high enough to get here. And the other gal backed out, so I mean.
Well, he, he was our backup, we had, we had, chose him for our backup. Just because of the, the time.
Three, two or not and it is, but again, like I said, that person doesn't really have any county practical experiences that, when I reviewed her again, but, uh.
Yes, for me, she's intelligent, she's honest, she's hardworking.
Well, I, I concur with.
She's got a lot of things going on.
With Erica, I did, I did think she interviewed better today. I feel that she's done a lot for county, I, I am, I'm, I'm close, I'm just, I just, I'm just need, I'm just, I'm just not, I mean, I'm, I, I don't know, but, but there are things that, you know, that you have hesitancies and some of it, some of it is attention to detail that I think we need to, I don't know, somehow work with Carrie on, um, just to make sure she would, and it, just, and I don't wanna discuss things in public, you know, but nothing, just little things that I think need to be, you have to pay attention to little details on ti- at times, because now you're rep, and in, as HR or county, you're representing the county and these things are important and, um.
I think that's something, no matter who you choose, you'd have to work with, you don't know what type of detail Tyler has and.
Right, and, yeah, correct.
That is very true. We, we see that because we have experience with Carrie, we may, we, that may be the same issue with.
I think Carrie has.
Or more.
I think Carrie has done a lot in these last couple months to show what she's capable.
What she's capable.
I, I truly think that and, and, you know, it, it.
Well, she's, you know, since she's been here and just in the HR part, she's had to go through how many lawsuits or had, or.
Yeah. Well, we don't, I don't know, 'cause I wasn't informed.
Well.
Uh, you know what was going on, Barry, there was a lot of stuff going on. Since she's got here, it's been unbelievable.
Okay, let's, let's not go down, but I have.
But that's what I mean.
I haven't been in the know as much as you, so.
Well, I think I was because I was vice chair a lot and, and she brought, brought me up to speed on it, not in all details, but just where it was progressing. And, but, uh, what I have seen in Carrie is she'll stand up and won't back down when she's put in a corner, so to speak, if the person is completely out of line. So, she is a very strong person that way, so.
And she's fair. I don't ever hear her say anything about, you know, I, I go in, she, she doesn't, she doesn't say anything about anybody, so I don't, I don't know where she stands with all of us, I don't know that, but I do know she's fair and she's strong and that's, she's just got, you know, she's got a lot of good qualities that you can't find in people, you know.
I do.
And, and she's, she certainly can learn, she's certainly capable of learning whatever she needs to learn.
It's a learning curve for, no matter who we hire, but right now, we started into the budgeting procedure. She's been involved in some of that, you bring somebody new on board and they're completely lost as far as that aspect, so it takes a lot of learning to get caught up, so.
I will say that I was impressed with Carrie's interview and I didn't know a lot of things that she's done until the interview process and reading her information. I will say that, I.
And no matter who we hire, I think it's our individual responsibility. We see something that we need to talk about, we need to communicate and, and that's why I guess we could a little change and correct somebody here, go in a different direction,
but. I think what I'm hearing across the, the board is of the, of the two, I think we're at a consensus that of those two.
I think so, Carrie was, I think Carrie.
We're leaning towards Carrie.
Carrie was today's.
Interviewed a lot better today.
Better interview.
Mm-hmm. And, and really, she, she has a lot of a variety of, I mean, she, well, she's, has twenty-nine, I mean, thirty-five, forty, forty years in, in public service?
Not quite that many.
Well, she's twen- had twenty-nine and.
Twenty-nine and one.
Twenty-nine and one and I thought it was like five or six and one, two, a lot. You're, you're asking me to do math in my head, I'm a social worker, I'm not a mathematician, that's the joke, but.
You want a calculator?
Thirty-one, thirty-two and a half.
Oh, thirty-two.
Oh, well, thirty-two and a half. So, which is, I mean, she has a lot of.
Experience.
Experience working in the government, which is important.
Probably more than that, actually.
And I never knew she was a, like, the publico, that, you know, being on a city council for, for eight years is also a, a big asset. Because it shows that she understands. So I think the decision is, again, where I'm struggling is, we have, we have two candidates. Of the two, I'm going with Car- I would go with Carrie. If we're saying that the consensus of the board is that our plan is not to, that we want to make a decision with these two. Did that make sense?
Well, I, I, I think Car- Carrie was the, Carrie is the better candidate and I was, I mean, I was not sure of that before coming in today. I mean, I was, I was not.
I wasn't either.
Going in on it.
Reading some of the stuff about Tyler, I think this is gonna be our decision, but.
I think a couple of his answers weren't as knowledgeable as I was hoping for, I mean, as, as far as, um, financial end of it, I, I thought he would kinda really take control over that part of it and he, and he, you know, I thought that would be more a strength for him and a weakness for Carrie, but it wasn't a strength either, so, um, so I'm, I'm just trying to think is, if we're all in agreement of Carrie right now and if, you know, if we're, if I'm looking at what, what am I, what am, what do I, what do I need, you know, I, I'm not gonna get any assurances by waiting a day or two, you know, I'm not getting that guarantee, there's no guarantee, but I will say, um, I would have been much more, I'd have needed much more, um, something if I wasn't choosing Carrie, 'cause I, you know, you know Carrie can do the job to this level anyway, I mean, to the level that she's doing and, and I, and obviously we, and improving, so, um, I think she has things to learn, I think she can do things better and I think we can help her with that and she can help us be a better board, but, you know.
See, she's done a lot of that, she's a better.
I guess I'm.
Liza, we need just consensus today?
No, there is, there is a, if consensus, consensus is reached, the board can take formal action today, the, the verbiage for the motion is on your schedule. That action would then allow the board to designate a negotiating committee to stick around after this meeting and help me walk through the negotiating of the offer terms and then the board wants to provide some, uh, feedback before I would meet with the negotiating committee, I'd welcome that as well, but there is a motion on the schedule.
I guess where I've been looking at and talking to my, the two board members who I have some hesitancy on, on how, this is a big step, I mean, I think our, the, where I'm at is if we ask someone else to interview and, and seeing the backgrounds that our next candidates have and if you wanna, how we're far down the line, I don't see that there's, they're gonna have a strength, strengths in areas that, that we, I mean, they're. going to have a strength, strengths in areas that we, I mean, like Richard said earlier, there's no, there's no candidate that's going to come with experience and...
We didn't have any.
Well, and I, and that's, and we have to take the blame for that, I mean, all of us, because we have not, we have not acted very well as a board this last, and I think this is showing, but Carey has stepped up, and I think this, I think she shows well that internal candidate says, hey, this is not a bad board, this is a board that, that I am prepared to work for, and I can do that and bring them together. So it would take someone spectacular, in my opinion, to...
There you go.
Yep. Knock her out at this time, after the way she interviewed today, so...
And with that, the only, I agree, look, knowing the, the only way for us to would be to reopen it, and I don't know that, we're still not guaranteed to get, you know, experience or anything, so, yeah, I would...
I think we should just...
Make a motion, Richard.
Make a choice and show confidence in her, she has been...
Well, I think that's, I mean, just this few minutes of talking has helped.
Has helped, yeah.
Because I mean, my mind is, it needs to move things, me, think things through and think of these different scenarios. I don't...
This one right here.
Yeah. Kind of make a motion.
The motion is...
We're kind of consensus, so...
I mean, I, I mean, I think, yeah.
With that, I'd make a motion to...
To, we just read that.
Carey's...
To offer the position.
To offer a position to, Becker County Administrator to negotiate the terms of employment with Carey Smith.
I'll second that motion.
How do I read?
To, to...
Enter negotiating terms.
Just right at the top part, right before that line.
I thought, yeah, I just thought of...
Does it make sense?
Yes, who do you want to do, to negotiate the...
Do we need to vote on the...
Do we need to vote on this and then vote on negotiating?
And then you can appoint your negotiating committee afterwards, yes.
Can we get a motion to second?
You motion, Richard.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing that, hold in favor.
You stop that, or there's more discussion. Oh, I'm just kidding.
We're bad discussion. You're talking...
I'm just kidding. You stopped, you cut me off pretty quick, Bill. I'm just kidding.
Liza said you're running out of time.
She hasn't, her bell's haven't went off, so...
I don't think she had a timer.
Okay. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Gary.
All right.
So the negotiating team, who do you want? The finance committee maybe would be the best?
Whoever you think is, makes most sense, and then I would rely on a staff member to weigh in on what, you know, benefits and...
I would, I would like to go through one of our, one of our attorney, labor attorneys to drop the offer letter though, so, and once you come to some terms. And John, you...
Do you do that, Liza?
I do have a draft agreement, and so after it's verbally approved upon, then I forward it to the county and ask that they, yes, have the county attorney review it and make any changes.
I would ask you to contact one of our labor attorneys, not our county.
She gets to that draft, we can send it over to our labor attorney.
So they can do any recommendations.
That Josh, more local, sure.
Labor attorney to draft, or I just want to make sure...
Revise if needed.
Okay, gotcha.
You can send it over.
Okay. Yep.
How, how long do you think she'd need to talk, give notice for other employment? Do you require it?
Not quite familiar with her, her relationship with that, just...
You have to keep doing both jobs, so you find somebody else.
Typically, we don't ask for them to put in their notice until it's actually approved at the county board level.
What if we, what if her notice, what if her resignation of her job doesn't get approved?
Hmm.
Maybe we could, could we maybe make that a joint, offer, put out an advertisement to hire now? Uh, HR?
Finance committee to negotiate?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Be myself and Dave.
Okay, wonderful. All right, wonderful. Well, then, does this board want, so I'll just share this out loud, these are the talking points that I'll be walking through with the committee. Obviously, we'll talk about the salary range, we'll talk about whether there's a potential step increase after a period of time and satisfactory performance evaluation. I've seen anywhere from three, six, nine, 12 months. As part of the agreement, I'm not saying that that's applicable here, but sometimes there's an offer of a moving and relocation allowance. Typically, the decision maker would determine whether there'd be a credit offered for years of service already served in terms of making an offer on PTO or vacation or sick time, whether there's an auto allowance, or you just provide a city, or a county vehicle, or federal mileage reimbursement, termination benefits. So in the event that the county were to terminate the employee for reasons other than malfeasance, gross misconduct, does the county offer anywhere from one to six months of aggregate salary and benefits? And then end of employment resignation, what would be standard here? You know, I've seen anywhere from 30 to 45 to 60 days, 30 is the average, but...
For notice?
For notice, yes. So those are my talking points that I'll be working through, and I think this is just the opportunity, if there's any feedback initially from the board, and if there's not, then I'll stick around and we'll start talking.
I think 30-day notice is plenty on, if they're leaving for notice.
And did you mention a probation period, like, but there...
So I do not typically see a probation or period within an agreement because they're an at-will employee. However, I do see, or we can spell it out in the agreement, whether there's a step increase tied to it, you know, you can decide that, but there's usually a three, six, nine, 12, or it's a check-in. Those are the, that's the time that you create some goals regarding some of the things that you've talked about today, and so that, I'd like that to be spelled out within this agreement. Otherwise, it's natural to assume that after you're in the position, then they would receive a step increase dependent on a satisfactory performance evaluation, but sometimes I see boards offer it some, somewhere in the middle too, just as an offer of, you know, competence and goodwill.
I think, like you said, I think we should, those, the checkpoints, I mean, just, I don't know if they're, how do you, what, those are in the contract though, or just...
We do insert it, so if that's something that you is...
They're not, they're not associated with step increase, they're just associated with, with just performance, or expectations?
I've seen it done both ways, yep.
Okay.
I think some of the past ones, we had some, little check-in at six months.
Yeah.
Whether we did it or not, you know...
I think it's, I think it's critical, I mean, I don't want, I don't necessarily want step increases associated with that.
Sure.
But I would like, and they could be informal, I mean, I don't think we need formal, but I think that would, you know, the board is requesting that, but I think that, that could be up to each individual commissioner too to, and her to get those relationships going early.
Yeah. All right.
I think that, I think the finance committee can navigate that, all of that.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for your homework, your diligence, and...
Do you want these back?
Yes, I do, and arriving at today's...